And uh support me in this process until we get to our annual meeting. But anyway, a a vote from my colleagues was important to me. And uh and so I called each one of you. Uh and tried to explain what my thought process was and what this would be this morning. So having said all of that, Ms. Khan, without objection, if there are any, please uh let us know now. And if if there aren't any, I'm gonna ask Ms. Khan if she would guide us through uh a brief vote from uh our colleague for two positions. Myself for Chair and Suzanne Purrier for Vice Chair uh until we get to our annual meeting in uh July. It is July, isn't it?
Yes, sir, yes.
Alright, uh but but if there are any comments before we get there, I I certainly want to hear them. Your uh support is crucial to me. So I think anything that I do going forward, uh really, I am desperately desiring your support. And uh and so with that, uh if there aren't any, yeah, there we are. I left you a message.
Yeah, I was out of the country. I didn't get a chance to interview you, make sure you qualify.
But I got ten minutes right now.
Yeah, I got you, man.
But uh Albert.
I want to say I wholeheartedly, after receiving uh your call and the discussion, wholeheartedly support uh your position as well as certainly uh as Suzanne.
Sure.
Outstanding um hard charger. That's quite a team player, so I certainly uh support.
Thank you.
I want to echo what my colleagues have said, and I want to also say thank you to Don for his term of service on the board.
Yeah.
Um I and I I appreciate, and I want to extend my thanks to both you and Suzanne for stepping into the leadership. For you've got a new executive director and an opportunity to build individual and collective relationships with the new leadership here. And I think this these four positions are going to be very important over the next uh six months until our our annual meeting. Thank you very much for stepping in.
I thank you for that, Phil. Amy?
Oh, I.
You're good?
You know, yeah.
You look like you had a question in your.
Yeah, not at all.
I'm a cartoon guy. I did these little bubbles on old roads, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say uh thank you and Suzanne stepping in. Uh I knew it was gonna be a great um transition, and uh Don served us very well.
He did serve us well.
Of all his shows.
Well, if, thank you, Rose. Uh if there are no more comments, Ms. Khan, would you lead us through this process briefly?
Yes, yes, sir. So unless there are other candidates for the positions, we have um a slate of new officers with uh Ms. Purrier as Vice Chair and Mr. Albert as Chair. And if this is all right, I would ask for a motion from one of you and then a second, and we will proceed to call the roles.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington, uh Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye, for Suzanne, upstanding for myself, is that what I do? I can vote for myself.
For yourself.
Okay, alright.
Congratulations.
Aye, aye, aye. Well, thank you all. Uh uh and uh now, with that, uh we also have a uh another uh issue this morning and uh and uh our former Chair, Rose mentioned, was here. Oh, there he is. And uh we wanted to uh show our appreciation for uh the service of uh Don Masaccio. Uh and so uh with that, Don, I'm gonna ask if you would uh join uh Nathan and I. Uh, yes, if you would join Nathan and I and uh we have uh want to sort of give you uh an opportunity to uh speak and show our appreciation, so do we uh have uh?
Would you like to give the remarks first, or would you like me to read the resolution?
I'd like you to read the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, then we're gonna.
Resolution of gratitude to Donald J. Masaccio for services rendered as Commissioner and Chairman of Norfolk redevelopment and housing authority. Whereas Donald J. Masaccio has served as Commissioner of NRHA since July thirty first, two thousand twelve, and as Chairman of the Board of the Authority since December fourteen, two thousand seventeen. Whereas throughout his service as Commissioner and as Chairman of the Board, Don has demonstrated an unwavering support for the Authority's mission of providing decent, safe, affordable housing as well as related essential services for the citizens of Norfolk. Whereas Don has been a strong advocate of opportunities for the residents of the Authority's communities and a consistent voice for the equitable treatment of all such residents regardless of race, age, or economic circumstance. Whereas Don has provided exceptional leadership by listening to the concern of residents, guiding the Board through many challenges facing the Authority and the community throughout his tenure, and working with staff to create innovative solutions to improve the Authority's structure and processes. Whereas Don's career with the federal government, including as the Assistant Deputy Administrator for Management of the USDA Food Safety and Inspection Service, and his extensive experience with mediation as well as policy formulation and implementation in the areas of human resources, civil rights, emergency planning, and administrative services, made him uniquely qualified to lead the Board. Whereas Don's patience, thoughtful decision-making, respect for all employees and residents, reasonable voice, and unparalleled sense of humor have served as a model of compassionate service, pragmatic leadership, and professional conduct. And whereas Don has consistently carried out the responsibilities as Commissioner and as Chairman of the Board with integrity, pragmatism, and perseverance, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of the Authority, do hereby take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for Don's service and many contributions to the Authority. Be it further resolved that the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of the Authority is hereby directed to provide a copy of this resolution to Donald J. Masaccio and cause a copy of said resolution to be placed on record in the assets of the Authority, adopted this fourteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion, please?
Second motion.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye. With that done, uh please accept me. This is one of the few times that uh what they said about you is actually true. But we do appreciate you, and uh I appreciate the service that you provide. And I think uh you have a trait that we like to see in many of our leaders. And uh before you assume uh the Vice Chair position, uh I think Bob Ramsey was uh the Chair we were serving then. But you were literally uh very, very quiet on the Board, uh very little presence. Uh but the minute that you were called to leadership, you stepped up and filled it admirably. And I think that's what good leaders do. And uh we wish you Godspeed in this next phase of your life, and thank you for your outstanding service. And if you would, if you want to take a minute to uh speak to your colleague, please do, here or uh at the mic.
Whatever works best for you guys.
I wanna see you.
Okay, you hear, everybody hear?
Yeah.
Uh again, thank you very much for those kind words, I really do appreciate it. Uh as I look back over the last eleven-plus years, uh it's been quite a journey uh from the redevelopment housing authority, moving from basically housing into more redevelopment with the uh uh things that we've done in Grandy Village, Pigstown, East Beach, St. Paul's, Broad Creek, all of those things have really moved us forward uh in changing us into uh NRHA dot two, two dot O. Uh additionally, in that particular time, there were all kinds of things that happened. Uh as you know, almost every day we had legal issues, and I'd like to thank Ms. Khan for marshaling us through those particular things. Uh additionally, we had the pandemic, which upended just about everything. Uh also, we dealt with the ups, crazy ups and downs of federal, state, and local revenue uh to figure out what's going on. And also, I thought back to the fact that we've had multiple executive directors. Uh when I first started out, we had Cheryl Montgomery, who uh was really a man of few words. And I like to say that's because he was from West Virginia and only knew a few words. Uh we then had John Konak, who, as those of you who were here then, uh realized that John often wanted to be brief, no matter how long it took. And then uh Ron Jackson, who came in and on any given day had a group of people who were so happy that he was not John Konak, standing next to a group of people who were so pissed that he was not John Konak. So, Mr. Sims, welcome to that world. Uh additionally, the one thing that didn't change in those eleven years was the dedication and the hard work of the staff. Uh given all of the changes that were affecting them, I mean, the technology changes were crazy, and we're not even talking about the AI stuff that's gonna happen. So they worked really hard to provide the resources and services to all of the programs that the residents and all the people in those programs relied on. So again, thank them very much for the, for that uh dedication. Additionally, uh there were multiple uh Board members. And while each Board member brought a particular background, set of skills, we were always able to find consensus on major issues and move forward. So again, thank you for those, that particular uh work. Uh so you always wonder what's the best way to say farewell. And uh I often say I don't plagiarize, I find inspiration in the work of others. Uh so I found some inspiration in a work done by Randy Newman, you know who he is. No, it wasn't any of the Toy Story songs, and it wasn't I Love L.A., or it really wasn't Short People. Uh but basically what he said was, "The time for us to say goodbye is near. For the day I hope would never come is here. It's been so much fun since we met, a lot to remember, and yeah, a few things we should forget." So instead of just goodbye, I'll say so long, and as for the light in which you see me, leave it on. I'm a better man than I was before, knowing you has made me strong, and I sure am gonna miss you when I'm gone.
Awesome.
God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you so much. Let me just rip a grin. Congratulate. Looking around. Alright, my brother. I'm all for that.
We got a pretty thing we're gonna give you and finish working on.
Okay, alright. And uh whatever that big picture, make sure you photoshop somebody younger in there. Thank you so much, and a safe, healthy, and happy holiday.
Thank you. Okay, uh thank you for that. We're gonna uh have our public comments now and uh.
Hmm? Minutes. The minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll get better at this uh as we go into it. By the time it's time for a vote to vote me out, I'll be better at it. Then let's uh uh I will uh uh entertain a motion to approve uh the minutes from the November meeting. After you've had a chance to review, excuse me, review or read them, uh please take a minute to review and uh read the minutes from our November meeting uh before we uh formally approve the minutes or make any corrections. Has everybody read them?
I've read them.
You haven't?
I have.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
So, sir.
Ms. Khan?
Yes, sir.
Carla Rowe?
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Dr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye, thank you so much. Uh, okay, uh and now we will have our public comments. Do we have anybody on us?
Yes, Mr. Wilson, we have actually six speakers signed up today. One is actually virtually, and we will start with the virtual speaker first.
Okay.
Um the virtual speaker's name is Erica Sanders. Ms. Sanders, if you would please unmute your phone.
And I stand ready with the.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear?
Yes, yes, yes. Hey, how you doing? My name is Erica Sanders. My address is seventeen forty Vernon Drive, Norfolk, Virginia, two three five two three. I'm coming from the Dig Park area. And today I just want to speak about not just the trauma that I heard somebody talk about in the last meeting. My son was killed here when I first moved into this unit. Someone shot through my house. I asked for a safety transfer back then, but then they switched property managers, so I understood that. And um just nothing happened now. But right now I'm getting a lot of help, and I appreciate that, especially to, from Ms. Rhodes. Um but I'm just coming to before then, like, I think it should be some help. When somebody, the resident's reaching out, it's a lot of violence going on out here, and we need help out here with the violence that's going on. These kids got guns, they don't care. Even after my son was killed, they were shooting at my house, and I feel like these, a lot of kids out here afraid too, so they turning to more violence. We need more programs, more security out here, 'cause it's, it's bad. It's really bad. That's all I wanted to come on.
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you very much, and uh we certainly hear you. Uh and I know uh factually that uh the Commissioners that are sitting in front of us today uh share in your thoughts and insights about uh what we need to do to make it a safer community for all of us. And uh trust me when I say we hear you, and we uh certainly have that goal as a priority. So thank you. Uh who's our next speaker?
At this time, we're beginning with our in-person speakers. I'll introduce the first two.
Okay.
Um the first is Glenne Strip of five 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 East Liberty Street. Topic to discuss is my manager, um immediately followed by Janobia Wilson, twelve thirty-two Norview Avenue, and topic to discuss is housing voucher and public housing um condition.
Alright, and and I want to remind our speaker, I know you've uh been waiting to speak, sweetie, and I I uh but uh we do have a three-minute.
Right.
Timing, and uh we we keep the time now. I I neglected to tell the lady, and uh but I appreciate you, you were here when I got here, and uh.
Yes, sir, eager to be here.
We want to give you an opportunity to uh.
I'm here about my manager, Ms. Sheil Widdicoe, wonderful lady who ever sent her to sight me, right? We thank you, 'cause we had drug dealers coming in there with guns wanting to shoot up the place. We had prostitution. We had people to die overdosing on people's houses and pulling them in the lobby. We had What You Name, we had it. But when she came, she cleaned the place up. Now we'll have their family again, but you know, with everything good, it's gonna be some haters. And we got some of them that is coming up against her. But if you don't like the building, though, you can tell them go about their business, not my too. If you don't like where you live, move, that's your right. Don't try to make it bad for everybody else. We had a wonderful Christmas party yesterday. I could be, I've seen, I've been almost nine years. I saw people there yesterday I haven't seen in years, though they stayed in for fear something would happen to them. But I thank you for this, please don't take it from us. Let Ms. Widdicoe stay right with us, we need someone like her. She's about her business, and she represent, represent you all very well. Thank you for your time.
Amen.
Be blessed.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, baby.
Thank you. Our other staff appreciates you, and we do it well. Who's uh our next speaker? Ah, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, good morning, everybody. I'm Janobia Wilson. Um I came last month to speak to you guys about the housing voucher. And uh again, I would like to say um as the Board, I would like for you guys to um try to revamp the voucher program. Um it's very hard to have a voucher after leaving public housing and find, finding that you somewhere to stay, and then you have to move again, and you guys are only giving us thirty days if I swim to stay. My biggest fear is that when March comes, um and my lease is up, I'm not gonna be able to refi, and I'm gonna have to go back to public housing. And just like the lady said, Ms. Ebony, Dig Park is bad. Dig Park is way worse than Tower Park. Um my daughter was outside playing, well, we did stay out there and almost got shot. And she's three, well, she was three at the time. So um you guys, y'all, please get some more security out there, make the housing conditions a little better. I understand that it's public housing, I understand it is based on income. But if you guys help us make it, make it feel like home, people will treat it like home. These kids need something to do out there. NRHA used to do stuff for the kids, and they just straight took everything away. Now they don't have nothing to do but hang with people that have guns. Guns is the new thing. We need some, some better programs in the housing communities for these children. Um we need a better uh voucher far as giving us more extended time to find a place. And when March comes, I'm really fearful that me and my kids gonna have to go back to public housing, and I refuse to go back. I will go get a one-bedroom shack and all of us sleep in one room before I go back to the park. That's how serious it is for me. So I'm asking that you guys just take some time, try to revamp that program, um try to get with some of these renters and make it, make, make sure that they are actually accepting it. They tell you that the voucher program is, is something everywhere, but a lot of these people don't accept vouchers. It's really hard to actually find you a place within a lot of time that y'all give us that's in a nice area for our children so they can go to a good school and actually be able to stay there. Like I said, I'm about to be this place again, and I've only been living in this place, it'll be a year in March. I done moved my kids three times, from Tower Park to Dig Park to Norview, and now we about to end up having to move again. I don't wanna keep having to go through that. I would love to find me a place where I can stay and my kids can actually grow for years to come. I'm not a bad candidate, I pay my co-pay all the time, and my kids are now all out everywhere doing god knows what. I'm just, I just need some help, and I need you guys to, to, to try to help us. Reach out to these renters, make sure they doing what they supposed to do, make sure they coming to fix our stuff in our house. My washing drive been broke for months, n- not doing anything. My property about to be put up for sale, there's nothing I can do about it. My worker that works here, no call, no show. Every time you call her, they never call you back. Y'all need some help, I come work for y'all, let me know, I will get down there and help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Your comments are duly noted.
Our next two speakers, the first of which is um Mr. Carl Poole, uh ten forty-nine West Forty-Nine Street. Topic is supporting community tools, um and he is representing the New Virginia Majority, immediately followed by Javon, thirteen, looks like ninety-two Redwood Avenue. Topic to discuss is property manager and also representing the New Virginia Majority.
Alright. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um I wanted to talk to you about um where I was last night and why what happened there should be important to you. Uh last night was the last meeting of Norfolk School Board um for the rest of the year. They um had the beginning of their uh budget process. Um the public uh comments are being taken for the next year's budget as they decide that. This is the first meeting where they're gonna take public comments. Uh they're going to unveil their uh draft of their budget recommendation for the city in the beginning of February and be voting on it on March twentieth to hand over to the city so they can add it to their budget for this, this year, twenty twenty-five. Why is that important to you? One of the things that both community mi- uh community members, parents, and teachers were trying to encourage them to include in their budget was to um, they made the demand uh to, for Norfolk Public Schools to follow the recommendation of their own uh internal uh equity audit and uh select three schools in Norfolk to apply the uh sustainable community school model to, to create community learning centers. Why is that important for you? Because it's a strategy that involves more parents, more community members, and leverages the resources of the community to improve the outcomes of students in those schools. Now, when you have communities in and around um Ruffner and around PB Young, um South Side STEM, Jay Cox, um Richard Bowlin, Booker T., I'm just naming a few, those kids from the communities that you manage bring whatever issues they have from those communities into their schools, and that affects how they do. And whatever issues that happen in that school, they bring it back to your communities. This strategy is a strategy that leverages uh public agencies, churches, community organizations, individual community leaders to be more interactive with. to be more interactive with their school, to bring the resources they use every day, to the programs they're running, into those schools to improve student outcomes. To do this, to get a developed partnership with everybody and anybody that's in and around the school. And since NRH, NRHA is an entity that is involved with people who send their kids to at least two-thirds of Norfolk Public Schools, this is something you should be involved. There were a lot of community orgs uh, there that night, there were a lot of parents there that night, there were definitely a lot of teachers there that night. There wasn't anybody from NR, NRHA there that night. But I want to invite you to not only come to the January twenty-fourth meeting, I want you to invite you to come to the meetings in March. I want to invite you all to be involved in trying to get this model implemented in Norfolk, because it can work if it's done correctly and that takes everybody in the community to do it, every entity that wants to be positive for people to live in Norfolk. And I hope that means you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And, is this the last speaker?
Um, we have one after this one.
One after uh, Vaughn. Oh, you're the last one.
Good morning, everybody. Um, before I begin, I'm just asking Suzanne for maybe about thirty seconds, a little grace if I hold her a little bit. You don't talk a lot, but I have a few things I need to say. Awesome, congratulations to both of you guys, some new positions. Um, I respect and I cherish the relationship that we have built over the years and I see it's a lot of positive things going on. Um, real quick before I get into what I, what is being sent out to you guys, um, I kind of been harping on this, that I've seen the change in NRHA. I've had conversations with this side of the table, I can understand, I can truly say that these people, you guys care. Um, I've had conversations with Mr. Alfonso up there, I know he cares, every time I call, he picks up the phone, he doesn't BS me. I don't know these two guys particularly, never had no one-on-one with them, but the questions that they say, I can understand, I can see that they care, but there's a lot of cognitive thinking when they, when they speak, you're not just yes man. So I do see the change in the things, the one issue I do have is, what is the process with hiring these property managers? Um, the turnover is always so crazy, but one particular lady, um, I can't pronounce her name right, Ms. Campos, Ms. Campos, um, from Young's Park. I have a very strong feeling towards her, um, I'm not saying it's right to talk about anybody, you know, talk down on anybody, but one thing we're not gonna do is disrespect the elderly. We have a um, a resident who's, I want to say is beyond handicap, doesn't even have any toes. He's in a unit that's not sustainable for him to live. Oh, I have pictures, I have videos. Um, he's being talked to like he's a dog with her, and I'm not even making this up, because one of the residents wound up calling, one of my colleagues was on the phone, listened to her speak to him like a dog. She came in and had like nothing, was no issue, this man is washing in the shower in his, basically a porta body, because his, his thing can't get in there because of the unit that they have. When the upstairs person showers, it leaks through the apartment, but where it's leaking at? There's a uh, outlet right there, so it's constantly, the fire department is constantly being brought over there because it smokes and squashes, et cetera, et cetera. If that's not a problem, that's not a lawsuit, then I don't know what is, you know, it's like, we can avoid a lot of these problems, we just have these conversations. I'm here, she's here, we're here in the community for y'all to utilize us, like, hey, what's going on out there? Let's squash this before things get, you know, bigger or anything like that. But when you have these type of property managers, you know, coming and saying, oh, nothing is wrong, and then boom, y'all get hit with a lawsuit, y'all won't, y'all wonder why, you know, it's because of things like this. So, um, I don't know what the, the correct um, screening processes, but I think, I can't just relate anybody up in here, man. It's just getting too, too ridiculous, like this man has a leak in his bedroom that when it rained the other day, it rained on him. It rained literally on his bed. She said, oh, his house dirty, I went in there, don't get me wrong, I've been to a lot of project houses and there's some, some, some people, you know, some dirty people, but this house was clean, you know? For him to be, handicap, it was, it was, it was still dirty, I got y'all, got y'all, got y'all, but I'm just saying. So anyway, to what these, what this paper is right here, I tried to send you guys the email, Mrs. Sims, I, I believe, Mr. Page, hard before you it. Our server is still blocked from NRHA, but this is one of the proposals that we've been talking about with the city, they don't work, so we just trying to get out the kinks. What it is, we're going to the residence out in
It's time to let Vaughn.
Okay, okay.
We can, we can talk.
We'll talk, we'll talk, okay, we got that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last in-person speaker.
The situation you were just talking, I was, the gentleman was in the office, you say?
Yes, um, Tiara is the manager.
Yeah, I'll tell her.
Basically.
Let me, let me do this, you can speak, you can speak there, uh, keep that right there, yeah.
Our, our last in-person speaker is Tiara Masterson, our topic to address is housing in Norfolk.
Alright.
Okay, good morning, everyone, and congratulations to all of the people who just got a new position. So, I came before you with a resolution to a dramatic problem that has been getting dr- drastically increased, and that is our homeless population rate. And so I'm addressing this with NRHA because I know you guys actually assist with decreasing the homeless population rate with the public housing and with the Section Eight and with all of the programs that are provided, right? So, one of the main problems that we have in Norfolk is housing creation and the zoning of the housing. So y'all, a few months back, at city council, we had a new developer come in and actually build four hundred and eighty units. It's gonna be at the depot where the old depot hospital would be at, it's gonna be luxury apartments. However, when we asked how many units would be dedicated to or set aside for low-income or voucher units, they said eight. So, it's looking like only one percent of all new developments will even be eligible for Section Eight or low-income people, period. Also, these new luxury apartments are far out of their price range, like, have y'all seen the price that they want for those condos? Fifteen hundred for one bedroom, like, people who make less than the poverty level oftentimes cannot have three times the rent to be able to move into those new developments on their own. That is physically impossible when you physically don't make that type of income. So, I was wondering if NRHA would please stand with us in asking the city to please create a zoning ordinance that mandates ten percent voucher units slash low-income and all new property developments in the city of Norfolk, because this indeed will create more housing, it will give us more choice as to which neighborhoods we could live in, give poor kids the opportunity to go to better schools that have more funding and that are actually accredited. So, um, it foster healthy development and empowerment while appreciating and responding to the needs and hardships of the homeless population in Norfolk. It creates fair, affordable, integrated and safe housing for disadvantaged and marginalized people. I also asked the city if they could convert some of their property that they have required, like the Doubletree Hotel or Military Circle into a homeless shelter, being that they restructured the courts from having two courts that were doing evictions to three. So now that we are getting put out at faster and quicker and higher rates, I feel like they should accommodate some of these homeless people that are now within the area. Additionally, if y'all didn't know, since twenty sixteen, according to the nationalized property victim cities list, Norfolk has ranked and has been number six on the one hundred numbered list in the whole United States. More people are literally homeless in Norfolk than they are in New York City, which is about seven times our size. Thank you for your time, have a great day.
Thank you. You got it all there. Does that, does that conclude our public uh, comments?
Yes, at this time, we know we do not have any additional comments online, I can check about it to see if we have any more.
Please do.
At this time, we have no additional public.
Alright, thank you there. Well, with that, uh, I believe that concludes our public comment, period, and uh, so we're gonna move now to uh, two presentations.
We're gonna reset. Reset.
Oh yeah, we're gonna move, oh yeah, we're gonna reset and begin, uh, uh, we have two, two items to consider, uh, okay, alright. We have to uh, we have two items that will uh, be uh, dealt with during a public hearing process that begins at eleven. And so, this is our reset, we're gonna take a couple of minutes, uh, a break before we regather ourselves uh, here for uh, the next segment of the meeting, which is a public hearing that's been scheduled for eleven o'clock.
It'll be right after this.
Alright, right after we finish with uh, this process, I wanna give our executive director uh, the floor to uh, make comments if you have any, you'd like to make or any announcements at this time, maybe.
Uh, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So I want to, uh, this, this is the key for everybody else who's uh, gotta get ready for the next part, to, to start getting ready, but um, I did want to run past a couple of different comments, uh, run, uh, run some things down in terms of what we've been doing. Uh, because I think that's very much important, um, and clearly in terms of some of the things that uh, has been raised today. Um, so one, uh, I want to talk about, uh, this is week five uh, for me, but uh, scrolling along. Uh, but uh, one of the things that we had talked about very early before I started, uh, was uh, maintenance, uh, property management, security, uh, things of that nature. And so, as we began to look at things and look at the structure, um, I noted that there was a lot of uh, misalignment uh, through our structure and which impacted, um, our effectiveness, and so to be able to do that, uh, we made some, some changes. So I'm happy to say, um, we made uh, substantial changes within uh, property management. Uh, one, uh, we elevated uh, Yvette Thompson, uh, who is here today to the uh, position of Chief uh, Property Officer. So I want to recognize her uh, for that. Uh, what that allows us to do is to move uh, our maintenance, uh, excuse me, our security, our facilities maintenance, uh, as well as property management, all under one structure versus being à la carte, if you will. Uh, so putting the hands back into uh, the property managers to effectively manage. Um, that alone is not, it is, it is a significant change, I'm happy and to have Yvette as a, a partner. Um, the other part in terms of that is, is maintenance. Uh, and as everyone knows, uh, we have, we have an interesting approach to maintenance where we have specialized maintenance and property maintenance. One maintenance is one organization, one set of properties that we administer, that we oversee at the end of the day. So, we have no longer uh, site maintenance and we have facilities maintenance division. It is only maintenance, to be clear. There's one maintenance uh, area that includes both staff, uh, general maintenance, uh, technicians, as well as specialized technicians for our area. Uh, they, starting on Monday, uh, they will be uh, led by Alton Coulter, who will be the Director of Maintenance. So, we understand that things have to happen a lot smoothly, this is a major step uh, in that direction. Uh, one of the things that would obviously we talked about, uh, we've heard, uh, is about attracting our maintenance items. And so, we are establishing a call center, uh, as a central point while we work on other changes. And to be clear, in terms of the other changes, we will have uh, a system in place, uh, hopefully by quarter three of uh, next year, which will allow people to put, uh, it simply is putting your maintenance uh, request in from your cell phone. So, in the, in the interim, because we're not there yet, we're gonna be able to have the centralized call center uh, where people can do that and it will be tracked uh, effectively to make sure that things are happening. Uh, also, uh, just to be clear around that uh, particular piece, uh, that's gonna start uh, next month, it'll be piloted at one of our sites. And it'll be, uh, once we'll see how that goes, and then it'll be uh, available to our rest of our community shortly thereafter. Uh, as many people know, many of our staff know, uh, we are located in a couple of different parts, um, from an administrative standpoint, um, here at five 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 and at nine ten Ballantyne, uh, where our facilities maintenance uh, has been historically. As of next month, our staff at uh, our facilities maintenance staff, uh, that is located at nine ten Ballantyne, uh, will no longer reside at nine ten Ballantyne, they will reside at our sites, uh, and at our, our properties, and it will be dispersed as necessary, uh, based on call volume. So, there will be, so our maintenance staff, our facilities maintenance staff will no longer be located at Ballantyne. They will be assigned to a community uh, within our portfolio regardless of the situation, but they will allow them to be dispersed in real time, uh, to whatever situation may arise.
Thanks, sorry.
No problem. So that's helpful. Um, it's not the end-all, be-all at the end of the day, but it is helpful. So, that is, it, you know, we need to do better, we're gonna continue to do better. And that's not to say people on our team are not really doing the yeoman's job. I understand that there are certain situations that arise, I don't, I don't make any excuses for that. Uh, but our goal at the end of the day is to make sure that individuals are aware, uh, we are aware in terms of conditions that happen. Security, just to let everyone know, uh, is something that is at the forefront of everything we do. Uh, but, there's a, there's a two-hand approach to this. One is security enhancements, which we're working to do, um, that include better lighting, uh, better, better cameras, uh, to, to do things. But that does not solve the problem. And to be clear, NRHA is not the police. Now, we work closely with law enforcement, we work closely with our residents, it takes all, it takes many people to get this right. So, we are working on the other side, uh, intensely to make sure that we are bringing programs to the table to help in terms of education, job training, even dealing with trauma. Those things are important. So, I'm asking everybody, because if I bring it all and no one accepts, I don't want to hear at the end of the day that NRHA is failing, because we're not. But at the end, we still have some improvement to do and we will do that, but we need everyone's help. Regardless if you live in our community, advocate for our residents, we need your help to connect those individuals to us and so that we can connect to the resources that are available. Next, I just want to be able to say that we did uh, last week meet with all of our tenant management organizations or corporations. So all of our tenant organizations met, uh, at Calvert, uh, met with me, we're two outs. I answered every question, uh, I laid out in terms of the vision that I had, um, for the agency. And I wanted to make sure that at the end of the day, they felt very comfortable in terms of the direction that we're going, that they had a seat at the table, and that we were going to do things to make their lives better. I think it was very well received, um, that's the feedback uh, that we've been getting. Again, people know that things are perfect, uh, but if we work together, that they can be much improved. And we've agreed to having quarterly meetings because I believe that's very much important. I do want to talk about development really quickly because wouldn't be me, but then, uh, I'm happy to say that we're very focused in terms of our development efforts across the city. Um, and while the comments earlier are talking, we're referring to just additional affordable housing, we are very much focused on creating all housing, because to be clear, this market is very tight. All sorts of, all types of housing is naked, not just affordable, but market rate, of course, they're needed. So we're focused in terms of moving those pieces forward and that's what we've been spending the last several weeks to do. I look forward to next month, uh, when we come, and by the way, next month when we do come, uh, each department is going to report out in terms of the activities that they are doing and the efforts that we're going to move forward. This is a, this is in a move to be as transparent as possible. I recognize in my short time of being, being here that NRHA uh, has a wonderful story, interesting story, and probably, probably interesting in history compared to who, depending on who you talk to. But we have to be talking about all the things that we have done and the things that we can be doing for the city. And so, putting a presentation forward that shows the types of things that we're doing in terms of unit terms, things that we're doing to reduce our vacancy, things we're doing to open up uh, different channels, I think is very much important. I understand the, the I understand the, the opportunity for people to speak and speak freely, but I speak freely and I speak honestly. And so, with that, I will always come back and tell, and tell everyone in terms of exactly what we're doing, how we're doing it and why we're doing it. So, in terms of development, Steve Morales, uh, will, and his team, uh, will be hosting a development forum, uh, in quarter one of next year. The purpose of the forum is really to bring, uh, attention to the investment opportunities within the city of Norfolk, particularly with NRHA. We're looking for development partners, we're looking for general contractors, architects, engineers, uh, anyone who supports that particular space, financiers, to get these things off the ground. To be clear, we've had a story, history in terms of engagement of, uh, contractors within this city. Sometimes positive, sometimes not positive. That's me, that's not anybody else's comments reflected here. But we are gonna do better. So, I am asking that if you know a contractor, a general contractor, or anybody in this particular space who has successfully done work, uh, in and around this community, we're interested in talking to them. We're interested in engaging them. We understand that our work sometimes can be complicated, it can be convoluted, it can be sometimes convoluted, but there's a method to the madness. And the madness is not only supporting our community and developing, uh, housing, it's very lucrative to you business, we want it all for you. Lastly, I wanna be able to, well, before, second to last, let me be clear. I wanna acknowledge a couple of different things that have happened in our, in our, uh, organization. One, uh, we have a couple of retirements that are very much notable. Uh, one, uh, who I think is today, if I'm correct, uh, is Tony Stahl, uh, who is retiring from NRHA after thirty-plus years. Uh, the second, who just escaped out of the room rather quickly, uh, is, uh, Richard Archer, uh, who is gonna be retiring, uh, at the end of the month, uh, after I believe thirty-five years, I believe, uh, with the organization. And we thank them both, uh, for their service. Uh, who he took with him is our new Director of Human Resources, who is April Brody. Uh, April joined us, uh, probably two weeks ago now, uh, maybe three weeks, uh, ago now, uh, from Virginia, Virginia Beach, uh, where she worked with the correction system, uh, as, uh, head of, uh, head of Human Resources. And so, we're excited, um, to be, uh, for her to be here. She, we believe that she will help us in a tremendous amount of, uh, uh, ways in terms of improving culture, improving our recruitment efforts and making sure that we're strong for the foreseeable future. I do wanna note, because it's not a tagline, but it's someone who really understands, April grew up in NRHA communities and very much knows, uh, what it's like, uh, and very much wants to make a difference, continue to make a difference. Lastly, I would say we're in the, the season. And so, I just wanna personally say thank you, uh, to so many people in this room, so many people in this organization and so pe, so many people in this, uh, community. Uh, folks have been very inviting, uh, very engaging, uh, everybody talks about my work habits and, uh, a reality of, uh, not working myself, uh, too hard, even though I am working pretty frantically. But I wanna say thank you because beyond just those general concerns, it's been well wishes, prayers and support. And so, I'm always reminded e- every day how fortunate I am to be in this position, but at this time of year, frankly. And so, again, I wanna say thank you, um, for that and I will continue to ask for your well wishes and prayers because many, many more days ahead are probably gonna be more challenging, uh, than cookie cutter. Uh, but I do wanna say thank you around that. And I'm open, to be clear, um, I'm open to meeting with anybody, you know, I, to be clear. So, I don't care if we had a prior tenuous relationship or whatever, I'm, I'm new. Take it for what it's worth, take it as an open invitation, bring an open mind, bring your facts, let's fix some things, have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Nathan. Uh, as we go into our, uh, commissioner comments, let me just say, uh, very briefly, oh, uh, very briefly, that, uh, one of the things that, uh, I'm gonna be, uh, looking at and I'm sharing this with, uh, Nathan for the first time, is I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to have some suggestions about the, uh, the, uh, agenda flow, the process for the agenda. I really, uh, I guess I'm not, uh, I don't like the idea of, uh, uh, not knowing, uh, what I'm bringing up and, and advancing forward, the way it lays to me. So, uh, I'm gonna be consulting with each one of you when I, uh, think about some changes to the, uh, flow and order of the agenda before I make any recommendations to, uh, to staff, to Nathan, to the administration here, uh, and they, that's all they're gonna be, administration, I mean, a, a, a recommendation. But I'm gonna consult with each one of you, uh, just kinda keep, it flows now and, I guess, makes me feel disjointed the way I kinda go into it. Now, with that, uh, we are at the commissioner's comments and I'll start on the far left end, uh, with Dr. Freely.
I yield back to you, it's John.
Alright, sure, thank you. Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith?
Well, I wanna thank the Executive Director for his comments just now. Um, clearly, you came here prepared to hit the ground running and taking on the challenges that you just outlined to us, I think gives us confidence that we, in, in the selection that we made in bringing you on. Um, what I will say is that it's, it's always difficult in coming in and waiting. As, as a new leader for an organization like this, I identify where to start and, and I think that you have begun by tackling things that have, that have been on the agenda for some time. I, I trust that you're building a team of people around you to, to help you do this. It is not a, it's not something that can be done single-handedly and, and I'm, and I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, the people that, that are, have been part of the organization for a while are there to help you in, in the efforts. Um, I, I do wanna, you know, bring up or just recall something that you said during the phase of recruitment that you, your, you value, um, board engagement
Yes.
as a, as a, as a benchmark for what's necessary to move this organization forward and building individual and collective relationships. You, your leadership for, is important and I think I, I agree with that. And, uh, so, I applaud the things that you've done so far and, and let us know what we can possibly do to help to make things, uh, continue to move forward.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Are you done?
Yep.
Alright, thank you, sir. Amy, any comment?
No, no, I'm good.
Alright, is there anything?
No comment.
No comment? Alright, Dariana?
Yeah, I just wanna kind of second, um, Dr. Smith's comments about, um, you know, your approach and, uh, you know, some of the simplistic consolidation of some of these things have been kinda clogging the system, you know? We, you know, immediately heard of a lot of comments about maintenance and opportunity and, you know, it's just so right on time that you've had, you know, a, a possible solution to, to kinda vertically integrate some of the things that have been an issue for us. So, so, you know, those types of things you're bringing to us, you know, we really appreciate it, you know? And, um, and I think, uh, we'll see a lot of positive results in reference to, uh, some of the changes that you're making. So, thank you, you know, for bringing that fresh idea and innovation to some of the things that we've been doing the same way for quite some time and I look forward to seeing some of the results that come from some of the idea that you have. And, uh, and, you know, kinda as well as Dr. Smith said, the support that you have is gonna be very important.
Yep.
Because we do hear about your work habits and you're working quite a bit, you know? So, make sure that, you know, we have delegation around some of those things, you know, to kinda, because we want you to be here. For quite some time, right? We don't, we don't wanna burn you out, right? And, you know, and we don't wanna give you any extra vacation that we don't have to give you.
Right.
So, you know, so I, um, I really, you know, we really just, very refreshing to hear, you know, some of the things that we've heard thus far and, um, you know, thank you to, you know, all the staff that supports the things that you guys are doing. So, just, uh, really appreciative to start to see some things moving in a different way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dariana. And, uh, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Uh, any comments?
Yes, I'd like to appreciate, uh, the, uh, Public Housing Committee who met, um, I think about a week ago.
Yep.
This is our second meeting. It was an absolute informative, an outstanding coming together and the Executive Director joined that meeting. Uh, it was spearheaded by Ms. Yvette. I think Steve Morales was on, uh, Ms. Karen and, uh, Mr. Odom. There were great presentations that were presented and I think we're moving in the right direction in looking at how to address the issues that our communities are facing, track these issues and just be, uh, of, of board and transparent about what we're hearing and how we're going to approach, uh, the issues that our communities are dealing with. So, I just wanna, uh, say hats off, uh, to that committee. Thank you, uh, E.P. for joining us and Ms. Yvette. It was an excellent, uh, meeting from all. And, uh, as we began to work more, um, on this, what's trending in our community and, uh, come together with our matrix of those things, we'll be presenting that to the board so you can see, uh, how we are addressing the issues, uh, of the resident. So, a job well done, thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you, Albert. Uh, Suzanne?
No, I have nothing to say.
No comment? Alright, so, uh, that moves us to our, uh, place on the agenda for our committee reports. Anybody have, uh, committee reports? We'll start with Financial Committee.
Yeah, we, we, we've had now two meetings, um, the Executive Director was present, most recent one, a portion of it. How I understand, might, might have been only a portion of it.
Right.
But, um, Mr. Pines gave us an excellent update on things, um, where I would say we are, and we have, well, maybe you can comment on it. We are, we are in the process of, we're, we're, we're working on developing a consistent process by which we will, what information we will, we will be looking at and what we, well, how we will be looking at timing-wise relative to this meeting and something that, that will become standard work for us. And so, um, I'm not sure that we have so much content to report here now, but, but we're working on, on moving in the direction of making sure that we're, we can arrive at a point where consistently, we could provide something to this, to this body on, on a regular basis.
Thank you, and, and, uh, we do have, uh, some content that, uh, our CFO provided. I'm sure that you all both considered and, uh, spoke to a lot of the things inside of this. As I'm looking at on page eighty-four, anything from your colleague?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman, and, and again, uh, I, I, as being relatively new at this body, I, I, uh, I'm just comfortable with how, uh, members of that, uh, staff have came forward with us and being, uh, frank and open and helping us try to comprehend
Yeah.
the complicated presentations that, uh, we, uh, we have to be presented with. They have simplified that process and it's my hope and their aspiration as well that we would be able to come up with a presentation that this board can look at and get a clear understanding as to where we stand financially and how we best might be able to navigate that. Uh, most of us here are not accountants, uh, and, and, uh, haven't been involved in accounting since sometime when I passed. I know it's often difficult to translate the language down to a layman's level. And for many of us, I think a layman's presentation probably deserves us well if we could take the, uh, the minutia and, and, and make it a simple, comprehensive, uh, presentation and or dashboard, if you will. Uh, and so, that's what they're working on and I just wanna thank them for responding to the innumerable, I don't know if this is important type question to me, uh, but, uh, they've been very welcoming and transparent and I'm listening to our recommendations, trying to make this that comprehensive, uh, uh, dashboard for us to grab here and group and be open for discussion as necessary, so I appreciate their effort.
Fantastic. Thank you, uh, Earl. Uh, with that, I will, uh, just kinda flip through, uh, some of the, uh, committees, well, actually, all of them, and see if y'all have a report and I'll start with, uh, Housing Choice Vouchers, uh, Program, uh, Committee. Is that you and Rose, uh, do y'all have a report?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry. I, I, I'm just, I just-
I think I might, I think I got in contact with him.
Okay.
We're gonna go as fast as-
So, one of the things, one of the things that, uh, I've been talking through with, uh, our Executive Director is, uh, trying to establish the kind of dates and I have some rough writings down here that I would share with, with you all on the committee. One of the things we wanted to try to do is, uh, be anticipatory as it relates to our reporting and, uh, either have a regular schedule for it that would suit your needs as it relates to when you met and how and then, uh, have a period that each committee would have at least some nominal reporting when the board met. So, if we could get dates or times in between the board meeting, now, some we can't get all of them in. We, we know we can't get them all in every month. But there are some critical, uh, issues that involve one area more so than the other and that, that those times you may decide to have a, uh, meeting and, uh, but try to get you on a schedule, uh, that you can, uh, have a report before the meeting, even if your report is no report. You know, you, you would have had the opportunity to meet and discuss if there are any critical things, any issues that, uh, need looking into.
Sure. If I could, uh, we, we are, we are looking to, uh, we will be offering, uh, times, uh, because every, every, everyone has a different schedule here. So, we're gonna, and so, now, I, I see that and understand that. So, uh, we're gonna try to work with each committee to make sure that we have either a morning option, uh, or an afternoon-evening option, um, to, to work in terms of everyone's schedule. Because everybody's trying to fit their time in, so I, I, I get that and then you have your day lives as well. So, uh, we're gonna try to work to see if we can, um, either figure out a morning time or an afternoon time, uh, that will work best for everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, and the, uh, the other, uh, part of that committee, aren't you all sort of housing? Does that committee, uh, meet with housing, uh, public housing? That's a separate committee, but, uh, I thought you all had kinda joined together and worked for it. Okay. Alright, well-
Dr. Smith and I, or from that committee?
Yeah, the Safety and Community Engagement Committee.
Yeah, there we go.
That was good.
Yeah.
That's good.
We're, we're gonna kind of structure this within the framework of what we do.
Well, that's a very good noodle on that committee.
And just as a afterthought to this, um, and it's, it's, could, can I, can I just say, Tony or somebody in this staff, please resend the schedule for the first meeting for the year.
Yes, and we have to circulate that, um, to, to nail that down, so we'll do that.
I'm sure my week, now, it's the second, Thursday that everyone's funded and stuff and that.
Yes.
So, uh, to have them in advance, if you can, just hope people-
Yes, no problem.
Uh, alright, so, uh, Safety Committee, that, that would be, uh, me. And, uh, and I don't have a report, so, uh, is there any committee that has met?
The Development Committee, we met.
Hmm?
Yeah, Development Committee, we met.
Have you all met?
Yeah.
Do you have a report?
Yeah, we met last week.
We'll take it.
Okay, yeah, so, for the Development Committee, uh, we met last week, I think it was last week and, um, we talked about, uh, we, we met with Clayton Odom, who's the Director of, uh, the, um, Construction Management and we just talked about the budget that we went through last year. Um, I know in our last, um, I know in our last committee meeting, commission meeting, we had some people talk about some of the, you know, the money that he needed that was allocated for those things. So, um, from a transparency perspective, um, I think, uh, we all discussed, uh, you know, what we, we wanna let people know what communities are, um, entitled to certain funds and things of that nature and where we're actually spending the money. Um, so, we went specifically through, um, where a lot of the funds went to from last year, boiler rooms and all types of different things that we've done. So, we wanna, you know, be able to communicate those things with people. So we want to, you know, be able to communicate those things with people in a much clearer and concise way so that the community understands, hey, we are actually spending this money. And here's where it's going. And this is what we're looking to do in the future. So I think that was a really good meeting. Outside of that, we have some things coming together. We're partnering with the city. We've been to Stan Sanes and doing some community housing. We really want to get more engaged in having local builders and developers and things that, and contractors really do a lot of this work. One of the things we noticed that, we have people doing the work in our areas. Sometimes it's not always in this area. So we're gonna work on being more engaged and finding people who can do some of this work in the area. So that's something that's, that's really exciting. I'm, I'm excited about, I'm excited about, you know, being a part of the local engagement with contractors and things of that nature, to be able to get improved pricing for some of the things that we're getting done.
Absolutely.
Because I looked at, you know, some of the estimates for some of the work that's being done and based on my experience, really high, right? And we just need to be able to have someone with a level of expertise to be able to kind of challenge some of these things. Or not even really challenge them, just come up with a way that we can do more with the money that we have. It's not about getting the cheapest number or anything. It's about getting fair market price for what we want done in these communities so that that a million dollars can go to doing three things instead of one. You know, because a lot of times these communities don't see that. Hey, we only have a billion dollars. And someone charges us that for a boiler room that we could really get it for seven hundred thousand dollars and we could do other things, and it kind of hinders us. So just kind of looking at some of those things and seeing how if we can get things done more locally, it could be a better price point because we have better connections and things of that nature. So that's some of the stuff that we kind of went over.
Yeah.
You know, going over the last year's capital budget funding.
Good note.
Yeah. Anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I do. First of all, let me thank Mr. Oldham for a real comprehensive presentation on his program and design. One of the things that stood out to me, and it's always been a bugaboo here in our region, I don't recall the exact numbers, but seventy percent of the demolition work done in St. Paul thus far was handled by minority contractors. I thought that was a significant contribution, a significant result, particularly in seeing all major projects that have taken place in our city. I think back to MacArthur Mall twenty, twenty-five years ago now. There was always a, a big bugaboo about finding minority contractors to be involved in that project. I don't know how we fare there. But it was really thrilling to see that through the efforts of N.R.A. A and Mr. Oldham at the point of the sphere, we were able to attract several of the proceeds revenues that were expended in that project, the demolition, went to minority contractors. And most of those contractors were here in the local region. So I think that speaks volumes for what N.R.A. A is trying to do in such a significant undertaking. When you're impacting people who look a certain way, it's always good to be able to see those gathering dollars from those exercises, to be able to participate in those results. So I applaud N.R.A. A and Mr. Oldham and the rest of the staff being able to accomplish that. Certainly, as we go forward, we'd like to see more of those lines. I think we drew ourselves a great service by, with the general public by demonstrating that we are going the extra mile by helping access local contractors, the minority contractors in particular, that can help us move forward with the programs that are trying to move forward. My head's off to that group.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's very good. And I think the two of you bring expertise to that committee that will serve all of us, the city well, just in the way that you have referenced those things. So that, that's a good, that's very good.
And Earl, I appreciate that point a lot because what we all said was with St. Paul specifically that if we do this right and we are focused on, we're focused on, it, it creates long-term opportunities for small businesses. It's great to create X number of jobs, you know, but we don't want one-off jobs. You know, this is the idea that if we concentrate on building that capacity for minority contractors, then we really begin to change generationally. And, and so if we can track that and tell that story, the side of that is that also helps us hold the city accountable for their own efforts in Section Three and how, how they want to reach out. They are tracking it right now. So it's more than just clicking off that box. But for, for us, you know, Oldham and you all, just really take the lead on that and give it a report out and that holds us true to what we said that was one of the significant opportunities for the St. Paul's transformation.
Mrs. Sims and I want to be able to create some, some, some type of workshops and that shit too, for people to really understand how to, how to put together a proposal, right? Like how to really understand what the language is when you're putting a bid together.
Yep.
Right? Like the word various, like the bonding and things like that, insurances and, and equipment and things of that nature. We want people to be able to go out and see these sites and, and explain to them what we're asking. And because people can do the work if they really have an understanding of what's being asked, right, the requirements, right? Sometimes there are some restrictions or some hurdles in the requirements, you know, and we want to be able to say, hey, look, you know, that, you know, that's really only just doing this, you know.
And unbundling those projects, unbundling those RPs and the bid request was huge.
Yeah, that was awesome. Very impressive.
Yeah, that was great. Because that, I mean, somebody can come in and, and do mowing. Maybe they can't do a whole landscaping job, you know? So let's just build the strength of the house. And that was just a huge step.
Absolutely.
Good. That economic inclusion, right now, Albert, that's you and I. And Nathan will be providing some support for us on that committee. I know we haven't met, but Nathan and I have. And, and we talked about what some of our focus should be. You heard some of it from Terrian and Suzanne just then. But when you and I meet, Nathan's gonna be good support for us because he is in one of the Deputy City Managers' clusters. And, and in that, they have, he and I spoke briefly to the City Manager at the Mayor's Volunteer Reception. And Pat came up and was speaking to us. But Nathan and I had a few minutes to chat with him. And one of the things that we were saying to him is, Nathan had mentioned keeping our relationship open with the city and understanding that we have some synaptic goals. We, we have some goals that run parallel to each other. And we can bring them together and work jointly on them. And so working with that area is something that he took the initiative on. And met with actually a couple of department heads and one of the Deputy City Managers on to talk about economic inclusion. So you and I, Albert, will kind of pull him into our meeting and won't be subject to the open meeting rule because, you know, that doesn't trigger with Nathan coming in. And maybe next month, we will have a report. I've got some ideas on how to capture the information. We were talking a couple of days ago about sponsoring a couple of workshops, right along the lines of what you were just saying, Terrian. Okay, so, and then the Executive Committee is one that we're gonna have to reengage. And so I'll, I'll talk with, I'll talk with a couple of you between now and then. I, I don't want to overburden any one person. So, but the Executive Committee, as Don foresaw it and as we discussed it, had to do with board management and civic and community engagement. And so it's, it's going to be a vital committee. And I already know that I have my sights lined up on Mr. Shadensky talking about who might serve that committee. I haven't spoken to him yet, but I intend to. I started the meeting today, so, but that's a vital committee that, and I know that whoever desires will be, is going to be served. With that, our stenographer is here. And, and I believe that there are no other committee reports. Do we need a break before we go to, okay, let's, let's take a brief, brief five-minute restroom break. And when we come back, we'll go into our public hearing.
Thank you.
The two items, the first, the first item is actually each year the authority we request money from the city of Norfolk. And probably about, I won't say it was the 15 or 18 years ago, it changed the law where prior to us doing that request before the city, we had to come, come and hold a public hearing for that request. So this, even though this is the, the requesting of the funds, this is our ask, um, there will be an ongoing budget process with the city of Norfolk. When they ultimately shape their budget over the course of the next year, and they'll also have their public hearings, then ultimately come back to the authority. Uh, with the, the funding levels that you all will take action on, um, next year as part of our budget process. But to kick that off, we have to, we were going to hold a public hearing and Sean Easter, he's going to come up and do a presentation. Um, briefly go over what we're asking for. The second item is our capital fund program. We went before the subcommittees on both of these items, the one for the subcommittees on finance. Um, as well as the development subcommittee and the public housing subcommittee to go over the public housing program. Um, each year we get funding from HUD and then we update our, our capital fund program. Clayton Oden, Odom, our, our capital fund manager, our, our director, who heads up, uh, design and construction. He's going to do an overview of what we've been doing and, uh, where we're at and, and what we're looking forward to doing in the next, uh, year. On the new, on the funding that we received from HUD, those are the values then we'll need forward resolutions in order to continue that work moving forward. So Sean, you want to come on up and give us an overview of our funding request?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Steve's got the introduction part out the way, so let's get right into the numbers. Uh, we do have four, uh, application requests that we're asking for at a total of $6.9 million. These funds usually come through the city funding process, as he said, uh, capital improvement program, the general fund grant, the home program and the community development grant. I'm going to give you a brief description of each and also tell you what's in the request. Starting with our capital improvement program, the request is $3.4 million. $3 million is for transforming the public housing communities. That is in addition to what's in Thai Water, but also looking at Young, Calvert and the surrounding area. Those funds are for planning and gearing up to move forward with plans for the additional neighbors. And with $425,000 for acquisition and demolition in our Willoughby project, the capital improvement money, uh, is set aside for funding neighborhood plans and support of designated redevelopment and conservation activities. And we have the Willoughby, uh, conservation community, which has identified certain properties they like acquired to, uh, reduce that blight and move forward that, uh, neighborhood for future, uh, future, uh, yeah, households, future development. So again, that request for CIP is $3.4 million.
So real quick, you said $3 million, um, what did you buy specifically in?
$3 million, $3 million goes into the transforming public housing community. And that is for the surrounding areas, Thai Water, Young, Calvert. That effort is, is in collaboration with the city and it's an ongoing process. We asked for right now five years out, but it's been a 10-year process, it's ongoing. And that Willoughby, uh, camp community, again, that is to clear for a break, a gateway in the community from the interstate and also develop some new single family goals. Our general fund, we asked for a total of $2 million, $2,087, $387 in the general fund. Let's get my description here for that. The general fund is derived from taxes, fees and other revenue sources. NRHA's funding, um, includes funding for the Monroe building, our program admin and also maintenance of our land, what you call TOA, your brass cutting, um, your board of, your trash cleaner. $300,000 in net for disposition, $1 million for program management, $126,000 for, uh, the Monroe building rent and $660,000 for our residential options agreement. Next we have our home program. Our home program is for little mod, first time home buyers to help with down payment and closing costs assistance. Uh, that request is for 1.3 million and that is for again, home buyer assistance, Chodo set aside and some admin funds. And last but not least, we have a request of $75,000 for the community development block grant. That money supports the home net homeownership program as salary infringes for the staff working with those first time home buyers. Any questions on those four requests?
Under the home program, was there some funding that was granted to, uh, was that part of home net? Or your department, would have funding given to assist with, uh, closing costs and things of that nature?
Yeah, yeah, that is under the home program. It is, that is part of that, uh, $1 million under the home program. And I think it's called home buyer assistance. Yeah, home buyer assistance, one million.
Okay.
Yeah, that $1 million will help, um, at about $60,000 a household, maybe about 10 in a year. We average, we try to average about 15 closings a year, that depends on the market. A million dollars does help at $60,000 per. All right, we have on the board here the city funding trends. We wanted to provide some data of kind of what it has looked like from year to year. Um, the request may be $6 million, but we are awarded what's available and what the city directs as far as the funding. So we expect to receive about $3 million. Um, you will see in those earlier years of 2020 and 2021, those included some COVID funds, totally like a one-time thing. So you have a level of funding pretty much for about. And last but not least, we provide an application timeline. As Steve said, this is an ongoing process that starts, um, around August or September. We're collecting data, we're looking at the funding that we have, the needs request. And then we submit the application, we come back with an expected proposal around April or May. And then we come up again to the board with an action plan based on the funds we have and the new ones that we expect to be awarded. What questions do we have? There's no questions, that concludes the funding application request. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Clayton Odom, I'm the design and construction management director for North Reed Building Housing Authority. And this morning I'll be going over, uh, the FY 24, NRHA's FY 24 capital fund program, which is HUD's funding year FY 23. Next slide. Okay, uh, NRHA capital funded, uh, here's a, a, this slide shows NRHA's capital funded communities. Uh, Young's Terrace, Calvert Square, Hunter Square, Mid-Rise, uh, Portray Mid-Rise, Bobbit Mid-Rise, Sykes Mid-Rise, Oakleaf Forest, Digstown. And we have some authority wide projects and the completion, the final completion and punch list for Thai Water Gardens. Just want, the next slide will be an overview of the projects funded in, funded in 2020 and 23 calendar year that we actually, uh, uh, completed, uh, or under construction now. Um, and an explanation for capital funds. Capital funds provides funds annually to public housing agency for development financing and modernization of public housing developments and for management improvements. Activities capital funds can be used for, uh, would be building renovations, building equipment, including HVAC, electrical plumbing, equipment, demolition, site acquisition, site improvement, management improvement, uh, safety and security, windows and roof replacement. And if a project is not included in the five-year plan, uh, or a recent physical needs assessment, uh, the DCM department would, uh, make an adjustment to the five-year plan to include that project. If it's missing out or it is identified as a need through the community. And one of the projects, uh, that we completed, uh, within the 21, 22 timeframe is the Bobbit Mid-Rise roof replacement project. That was, uh, $103,000. Uh, next slide, uh, with Mid-Rise Call to Aid replacement project at Bob, uh, Bobbit and Hunter Square and Portrea, uh, where we replaced the, uh, Call to Aid system. And the photo shows the existing pool station and the new pool station. And that project was, uh, $364,000. And also additional photos on that project. Uh, the photo to the left is the new, with, has the new alert light off. When the pool station is pulled, um, the light will come on outside of the unit. And there's also an audio system that will sound off to have the residents come outside to see whose lights on to render some sort of aid either by calling, uh, um, the ambulance or, um, the police. Um, here's the Mid-Rise Call to Aid, also the new security air display and the new manager's area display. Next project, uh, Portrea Mid-Rise window replacement project. That cost, uh, that was at a cost of $316,000. There's a photo to the left of the existing windows and there were 114 units in which we, uh, uh, replaced the windows in. And next slide will be, uh, the window installation completed. Next slide, uh, is Thai Water Gardens. This is Thai Water Gardens as with the 78 building or the 78 buildings in place. And as we go through, this is, uh, next slide would be construction and demolition work, which included pile, uh, extraction of pile foundations, the actual abatement and demolition of the buildings and the floor removals. And the next slide is what we have now at Thai Water Gardens. All of the buildings have been removed in that neighborhood. With this project, it was a, it was a, it was a goal of the agency to ensure that minority participation was, uh, a part of this project. Out of a, um, $10 million budget, uh, we had $7 million in minority participation with equals around 73% participation for minority contractors with the Thai Water Gardens demolition project. Another project that we worked on and completed was the Boilery Tube and Refurbishing Project at Digstown, Calvert Square and Young's Terrace. That cost was, uh, $1.3 million. That's what they, to the left is a photo of what the existing boiler looked like. Once the re tubing project was completed, that's the photo to the right. Oakleaf Forest, uh, Oakleaf Forest, uh, boiler replacement project, that was $1.2 million. We had 32 buildings to replace the existing boilers. This is a photo of what the existing boiler, um, condition was. And the next slide is the new boilers installed. Next slide, this is a project that we just received bid for, uh, and the low bidder was, um, for Texaco. And their bid was $1,986,000 for a, for a, uh, additional elevator at site, uh, Mid-Rise and for elevator upgrades to the existing elevator at site. But first, the contractor has to build the, uh, new elevator system before he moves on to the upgrades at, uh, for the existing elevator. Next one, uh, Oakleaf Forest exterior door, storm door and porch light replacement. That's $1.1 million. Uh, replacing all the exterior, exterior doors and storm doors and porch lights. Here's the photo to the left shows the existing condition. Photo to the right shows the contractor in progress. And the next photo shows the porch light install, the new door, exterior door and a new storm door after the installation. One of the other projects that we, uh, actually completed was Oakleaf Forest exterior building lighting, which was to install additional lighting along the perimeter of the property, uh, for, uh, safety reasons. Young's Terrace Recreational, uh, Center and Maintenance Shop and Rental Office Roof Replacement. This project is currently in progress, uh, that was $547,000. The, the existing roof was beyond its usable life, so it was in the best interest of the agency in order not to, uh, have interior damage, uh, to the offices inside of the building to replace the roofing system. Now, the next project is not a capital funded project, but it is a notable project. Uh, it's the Digstown Recreational Center Fire Damage Repairs, which was a non-capital project. The existing photo to the left shows pretty much what the building looked like after the fire. Um, to the right shows the flooring going, uh, being installed. Uh, next slide, next slide shows the. Next slide shows the flooring fully installed and being finished. And, uh, last slide to it actually shows the final product for the gym floor. And this, um, was, construction is scheduled to be completed on the December eighteenth. Additional projects that we've completed, but no photos of, uh, Calvert and Vision Center Exterior Improvements. Bids were open in, um, December. Uh, Midrise Common Area Flooring Replacement at Bobbit, Hunter, Sykes, Portraya. Um, Bobbit and Hunter Square Elevator Upgrades, that's under construction. Digstown Roof Replacement, uh, nineteen buildings, uh, that are still public housing buildings. Uh, that's under construction. Uh, Portraya Midrise Domestic Water Boilers, that project has been completed. Oakleaf Duplex Roof Replacement. Uh, all of the roofs were replaced on the duplex, uh, structures at Oakleaf. Uh, Grandy Village Additional Geothermal Wells. Uh, Grandy Village, uh, Gym Roof Replacement. Sykes Midrise Balcony Resurfacing. Uh, Bobbit Midrise Window Replacements and Oakleaf Electric Hot Water Heater Replacements. And in course of the last two years, uh, the, the Design and Construction Management Department, uh, performed a lot of in-house design work ourselves on, uh, projects such as the Bobbit Midrise Roof Replacement, Young's Terrace Recreational Center Maintenance Shop, uh, Roof Replacement, Oakleaf Forest Exterior Building Lighting Project. Uh, Digstown Phase One HVAC Electrical Bots and Wiring Replacement. Oakleaf Forest Exterior Door, Storm Door and Porch Light Replacement. Digstown Public Housing, uh, Roof Replacement. Uh, Boiler and Retube and Refurbishing Project. Once it was all said and done, um, we performed, the, the department performed, uh, design work in-house, the plans and specifications at a savings based on the proposal we actually received from consultants to perform this work. Uh, we actually saved the agency four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Next slide. Now we're on to NRHA Capital Funded Communities and additional funds added to the public housing use, non-capital expenses. Right now HUD awarded, HUD awarded, uh, NRHA for their FY twenty twenty-three Capital Fund Budget, ten million three hundred, three thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And had one adjustment being made to actually, uh, give NRHA an additional thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The revised amount is ten million three hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for NRHA, of which of that, those funds, five hundred thousand dollars will be used for non-capital support maintenance and training for our resident organizations. Next slide. Uh, the first community is Young's Terrace. Uh, Young's Terrace, uh, we have budgeted one million thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And that's going to go towards mechanical upgrades, site utility improvements, bathroom and unit move remediation and a laundry facility, uh, site improvements and unit upgrades on an as-needed basis. Uh, the next slide.
Could you connect something just a moment? Could you go back one, uh, slide to the past million dollars and you said the training for resident organizations from FY twenty-three?
Right. Okay. The five hundred thousand dollars i- is going to be, is two actual low, it'll be used for two different things. One is going to be used for non-capital support maintenance, which is, some of it's going to be used for operational use in our communities where the maintenance staff may need some, uh, some additional assistance in getting things done or additional funding. So a portion of that would go to, um, the non-capital support maintenance. A portion of it, as needed, will go to the TMCs and the resident advisory boards to bring them up to speed and give them training also. So specifically, dollar amounts have not been derived because the cost of the activities have not been defined. So, but this is what we slated as an estimate that would be needed.
Thank you for this, because we hear consistently through the community, uh, about the need for training, um, for residents, you know, for the, you know, the advisory committees, the management organizations. And so, um, we want to try to keep an eye on this, not that money gets put up into some money.
Well, 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 I'm sure.
None of that ever happens.
I'm sure Mr. Sims has his eyes on that one. That, that's his little baby right there. Okay. And, um, the next slide, the laundry facility at Young's Terrace. Okay.
You said, no, you said operational, non-capital use, but for train, you said, might resident work, give a job per se to work in some of those?
So, so, so for the, um, so the cap fund is pretty flexible in terms of, uh, the uses. So it is bricks and mortar, as Clayton has covered in terms of some of the projects. But it also allow, it also allows for, uh, security enhancements like better lighting, better cameras. We can't use the money to staff people to watch those things, but we can pay for the hardware themselves. Uh, in terms of, uh, the resident engagement piece, we can pay for training. Um, we can help with homeownership. We can help with a number of different things with public housing, um, in that particular space. So it, there, there are different, different categories, um, mainly because it means just the needs in many, um, many housing authorities. A ton of it is always thrown towards, um, the project, the, the capital projects themselves, along with expenditures for staff related to that that could be charged. But there are other things that are, we do have some, I mean, we've done a great job in terms of putting a lot of project forward. Clearly we have a lot of needs, um, but this gives us an opportunity to kind of prioritize, um, those other components as well, which is the, the training for, um, the resident, uh, organizations, uh, as well as the other, other programs that we can introduce around self-sufficiency and things of that nature beyond FSS and all of that.
I'll make one other comment, that in this case, capital fund serving is the funding source. And, and Clayton won't be managing that, that training with the TMC.
Right.
It's just, it's just serving, this is why we have to identify in this budget and pull those money out and say, this money is, is available for that training. And that's what this process is doing. So if we don't, if Clayton doesn't pull that money out and put it into this, into the budget he's doing today, then we couldn't use those funds for that purpose, even though they, they, they would be eligible. We have to clearly identify it in the budget and that's what Clayton's doing.
Darren, I'm following with Suzanne, would like to identify, um, those services given to maybe the TMC, a resident advisory, uh, that stipulated that this is how the fund has been used toward that type of training.
Yeah, we can report back. I mean, so, um, to that point, um, to everyone's point here, um, there are specific categories, um, for specific activities. Um, and I think it's, it's in your, it's in your packet, um, but how, and so you can see there are certain codes. So there's a code specifically for, uh, the resident, uh, the resident organization component. So it will, it, it, so it's essentially a budget line item in the fund itself. The act, the actual activity, certainly we can come back. I can say firsthand, like I've reached out to, to NARO in terms of a number of trainings, um, for staff trainings on a variety of programs, including, um, for our tenant management, uh, corporation. So we move forward with that, it would be charged to that. Any other activities, obviously, we will report, uh, as well that would be charged to that, um, that account.
I know this is kind of a random, but, um, can they report stuff like this?
Um, it can't actually, yeah, we, I talked to them actually during the break. And so that is something we talked about internally, of trying to just figure out connecting people through that transportation piece. We can figure that portion out. I think we're something we're interested in doing. It may not be that specifically, but I think there may be a way to kind of get at that. And that might include the use of capital funds for sure.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, the, uh, Young's Terrace Laundry Facility, uh, was on, what's on the slide now is, uh, on the screen now is a, the proposed design for the Young's Terrace Laundry Facility Project. And that's slated to be funded with, uh, the FY twenty-three funds. Uh, Calvert, Calvert Square, Exterior Improvements, New Building Exterior Water Service Cutoff Valves, uh, As Needed Interior Exterior Unit Upgrades, Exterior Improvements and at the Calvert and Vision Center. And that's, uh, the budget amount for Calvert Square is, uh, one million dollars. Hunter Square Midrise Architectural Engineering Services, unit, uh, unit upgrades, interior and exterior, um, new common area lighting, new common area flooring, and the budget amount is four hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-one. Portraya Midrise Architectural Engineering Services on an as-needed basis for unit upgrades, um, common area flooring replacement, additional elevator, additional elevator construction and upgrades to the existing three elevators at Portraya. Uh, the budget amount is three million three hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine. And here is a, uh, a rendering of the Portraya Midrise Elevator Upgrades in addition. Um, Portraya Midrise actually has three wings. And we're going to be adding a new elevator to each one of the existing wings. The existing elevators are more to the center of the building. The new elevators, in order to reduce the impact on the residents, uh, we decided that the best location would be towards the outside of each one of the wings to Portraya. And it, and, uh, to the left, you're going to see how that would look on the side of the building. The photo that's actually to the left shows it not being there. And the photo to the right actually shows with the new, uh, proposed elevator. And these, uh, elevators are definitely needed. And in, in conjunction with this project, as they build, complete an elevator, they will be moving to the interior to renovate that elevator that serves that wing. So it's a two-phase thing, new elevator with renovations to the existing elevators. Uh, Bobbit Midrise, uh, replace metal exterior doors, replace building water fountains, common area floor replacement, unit upgrades on an as-needed basis, replace laundry room drain lines, four hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and thirty-nine. Um, Sykes Midrise, uh, we're going to do a window replacement design in order to replace the windows at Sykes Midrise, common area floor replacement, new unit doorbells and as-needed unit upgrades, three hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and sixteen.
Clayton, what's the trigger for as-needed?
Uh, the trigger is, uh, if, if the property manager or the, the chief of property manage, management, um, approaches with a project that maintenance cannot handle, then we would put together, uh, either our own design or we would get a consultant to come in and design wherever the fix is and perform, uh, uh, the job through capital funds. Because it would be a replacement and not a repair work. Uh, Oakleaf Forest, um, mechanical upgrades, window replacement and ADA improvements. Um, site improvements. Um, Building twenty-three is a building that has five units in it. And our plan is to install mini-split HVAC system inside for those five units in order to test the system to remediate mold or any type of, uh, bacteria in the air in the units. And we're also going to be installing, um, bathroom exhaust fans. So this is, uh, our trial run with the mini-split systems, um, in Oakleaf Forest and bathroom exhaust fan installation and window replacement and roof modifications. And that's, uh, one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eleven. And right here, as far as the roof modification and window installation, here currently is an existing profile of the building at, um, Oakleaf. And you can see there's a, uh, a frame, partial A-frame at the front that was, uh, put up there as the, create a decorative, uh, profile, uh, to the, uh, to the building. But the remaining portion of the building is a rubber membrane roof, which is actually failing. So versus, uh, coming in and replacing the existing rubber membrane roof, our plan is to extend the A-frame roofing above. And on the next slide, you'll see the conceptual drawing that we're working on. And I believe the design work is at ninety-five percent complete. But we're planning on extending that A-frame roof from beginning to end. And we're also going to be installing new windows at, at, um, at Oakleaf Forest.
In reference to this, uh, particular site, so the mini-split, um, obviously you probably have issues with the central air.
Correct.
So these work, um, and you like the, uh,
The outcome to it.
The outcome, what's the, what's the next?
Well, we'll be phasing in to the next year, next year's budget to try to, uh, phase the completion of all those units with the mini-split in Oakleaf.
And the bathroom exhaust, are these first level, these two-level units or are the units above? Or like how, because these walls are CMUs, isn't it, right?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
Not there.
Okay.
No, and, and as a matter of fact, the actual bathroom exhaust vents were going to be installed with the roof modification project.
With respect to the roof modification, so you're saying that there's a rubber membrane. Are they going to rip up that membrane and then put the extension on?
I believe that they're going to take as much as needed, but they may leave it in place, uh, in order to lessen the cost of having to demolish it. Because basically, we're going to be encapsulating everything under the A-frame.
Yeah, I guess, it's only because, you know, because we have cases where we've had experiences with stuff like this. Just I just be careful with that because, you know, for example, if I get trapped under those layers and cause more leaking.
Well, that's the thing. Once we put the new A-frame roof up, we shouldn't have any, uh, leaking on the, the rubber membrane roof anymore. Once that's done.
All right.
And the next slide is Ty Water Gardens. In order to finish up Ty Water Garden due to final project closeout, we're estimating it should be roughly around, uh, fifty thousand dollars to close out that project. Next slide, Digstown. Uh, site improvements. Um, install new playground equipment, painting exterior of the public housing buildings, uh, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine. Authority-wide comes back to the, the five hundred thousand dollar non-capital support for maintenance and, uh, training for resident organizations. Next slide. Authority-wide salary fringes and miscellaneous administration, which includes, um, administrative salary, fringe benefits, office, uh, rent, uh, equipment, training, mileage reimbursement, office supplies, PC software, uh, travel, uh, management fees, membership renewal, advertising and printing. We have a budget of one million thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-one. Now, just to, um, let's, to bring you up to speed, or if you may not know, NRHA, uh, has non-capital funded communities also. as, as well as our capital-funded, um, neighborhoods that I went over in the beginning. Uh, non-capital, uh, funded communities are Franklin Arms, Grandy Village, North Wellington, Digstown Phase One, Cottage Bridge, Guy Avenue. And we also have owned properties that are managed by private firms. Um, Merrimack Landing, Oak Mountain North, Mission College, and Park Terrace. And the next, the next slide, as we'll see, is the actual, um,
Clayton, can I make a point on that? Um, please, uh, so, the benefit of showing that is, uh, as you're in your travels, uh, and you come across individuals who, uh, may speak about one of those properties that's on there, um, and instead of it being kind of lumped together, I think the, the key piece to note, uh, because that's kind of the wave of the future that we're moving in. So, each, so, as we're, as Clayton is describing, the capital fund and all of the different, uh, public housing communities that, um, are vying for capital fund, funding, uh, these, uh, properties, uh, have their own individual re, reserve for replacement accounts. So, any replacement items, similar to the things that we're talking about, they have specific accounts that are for those properties only, um, to tap into. Um, so, if, you know, just to, just to make that distinction, because I think that's sometimes in, in, important, um, you know, to communicate.
Yeah, Nathan, uh, and, and Clayton, I think I'd ask the question in our committee, uh, session with regard to the private management firms that manage, uh, Merrimack, Oakley, Mission, Park Terrace. Uh, my curiosity was, what percentage of the rent proceeds goes to the management company?
Uh, it's, it's the same, um, it, it's, uh, typically, it's in five, five, six.
I, I think four and a half to five percent. It's a, it's an industry standard, so we'll get that specific information on each one of those projects. We'll bring that to you.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Any additional questions? What, what's next is, uh, just the, our, our five-year plan. Uh, that this information is included and has been reviewed, um, within the five-year plan for FY, HUD FY twenty-twenty-three. So, these slides are slides that you can look at in your, in your leisure of the upcoming budget years. This is, uh, this can be changed and adjusted as needed based on the agency's needs.
As long as we put in an amendment, right?
Right. And I think I've asked, if there's no other questions, uh, I think the next group, the, uh, will be, uh, Mr. Sims will be asking for, uh, approval of the resolution for this FY.
We need to open, open the public, public comment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a quick question. Now, when we did Broad Creek and, uh, are these, are, are, do we own any of that or get any proceeds back from Broad Creek, uh, housing, land?
Yes.
Just.
Broad Creek was, uh,
When I say Broad Creek, I'm talking about?
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, right. You said, did we own any?
Yeah, what, do we get any proceeds from that?
Oh, uh, during development, didn't they buy the land?
So, we're, we're in that process, and if, we, we were at the board, was it last month? Um, we're in a process where we're gonna be renovating those projects, but no, those Lytec developments, we do not receive any, any funding for those. We are actually, we fund the public housing units that are there through operation. Um, so, no, we do not receive funding from that. They're owned, the units are owned by TCB, or actually now entity. Um, we are a part of that entity at the moment, but the idea, what we talked about last month, was that there would be a recapitalization going back through the loan some housing tax credit process for a full renovation of the Broad Creek unit. And at the end of that process, the authority would no longer, um, be leasing the land, and we'd no longer be part of the ownership. We'll be getting out of the, the property. And as part of that process, we will be receiving, um, payments through, uh, developer fee, land sales, um, and, uh, deferred payments.
Okay. And you'll be sharing more of that information with us?
Yes.
As we proceed in that direction?
We'll be going before the, um, finance committee and the development committee on a regular basis as we move forward with that project.
To that point, um, and for the, the rest of the board. This presentation was made to the, the development committee and to the finance committee. So, like, this is your third time in here. And what we wanna be able to do is, you know, in a direction where the board has the capacity, as a whole, has the capacity to rely on the vetting process of, of the, of the committee. And I, at this early stage, it's very appropriate that we're presenting until each of you has an opportunity to ask questions. That being said, a lot of the things that you're asking, we're already, we're already discussing the, in the, um, in, in, in the respective committees. Um, and we, we as a board will have to decide how we wanna use our time and board. But I assume we're gonna now have to make some vote on something?
Uh, we, we're gonna open, uh, Clayton's.
I'm quite finished.
No, no, oh, no, yeah, I, I got you. I, I just wanted to just lay out, like, once we're done with the question piece, uh, we would then open it up for, for public, for public comment, uh, and then we'll take it from there, but.
Albert, forgive me for interrupting. I just wanna make sure that there's an explanation.
This is my second time hearing, and it's lovely.
Yeah.
Even more the second time.
I love to make sure that everybody has, that the committee process is, machinery is starting to work. We've been able to see this a couple of times already.
I just wanna go back to Steve, because he was going in the direction that I was asking the question, as he was speaking about, uh, the credit and the land from Broad Creek. Uh, what about Moton Circle, where Moton Circle used to be? That land, because that's still open land, correct?
Yes, and we'll be working on that, and that will be, I will come and come to the board with next, next year.
Okay, I'm in here with the case.
No, 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 you're right, you're right where you're supposed to be.
Thank you.
And, and that just, that just reinforces where he needs to be. So, he's good.
That land is beautiful.
Yeah.
That's beautiful land. Okay.
Any, uh, public comment? What?
If we could have the chairman officially open the public hearing. It is eleven forty-one AM for the record, and we're opening the public hearing on these two presentations to see if we have any comments in person, in the hallway, or online. If you could please check the online platform.
Yeah, we will, uh, well, uh, Ms. Khan just stated what we're doing here. Uh, after this presentation has been, and you complete, Clayton?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we will open the, uh, process for public comment, uh, at this period.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman, at this time, would you have any in-person speakers? Or would you have anyone on that person?
No in-person, nor, uh, no online, uh, speakers at this time, uh.
Steve, did you check the hallway?
There's none in the hallway.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll give it a couple of minutes, and then we'll close that process, and I think we move on to a resolution.
Correct.
If there are no public comments, either here or, uh, uh, outside of here, uh, in any other form, I'll consider the public, we will consider the public, uh, hearing process closed, and, uh,
Eleven forty-two.
What time is it?
Eleven forty-two.
Eleven forty-two.
Oh, my. And, uh, we will move to, uh, to, uh, vote on the resolution. Do we have a resolution with this?
We have two. We need a, yeah, we're back in the session.
No, 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 we're good, so it, there will be two votes.
Yeah. Two votes.
Everybody have a resolution? It's in your packet.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. It's on the board, too. We got it.
We gotta, we gotta cover it.
Uh, okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Well, um, yes, so the first.
We need a red?
Yeah.
Well, we just need to make sure we know which one we're voting on. So, the first one is to authorize the submission of the city funding application. We will go with that one first, could have a motion and a second.
I'll go move.
I second.
Okay.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Ms. Arrington.
Aye.
Dr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Conyers.
Aye.
Mr. Freely.
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
And, uh, let's start the next resolution.
The next one is for the capital fund that Clayton Odom just presented.
I'll go move to approve, uh, capital funding FY twenty-twenty-five.
I'll serve it.
Probably moved in second, Ms. Khan.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Ms. Arrington.
Aye.
Dr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Conyers.
Aye.
Mr. Freely.
Aye.
Ms. Chudzinski.
Aye.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Clarification, the funding is for twenty-three.
What was that? The, the clarification, the funding is actually for twenty-three?
For?
Not twenty-four.
Cap fund.
Capital fund.
Yeah.
HUD, HUD year. Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
All right, uh, next time, so, uh, uh, talk about that later. Is that the last item on the agenda?
That is.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, well, that's the last, uh, item we have on the agenda. And, uh, I'm gonna move to close our meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, multiple persons present, if you don't mind. Then, as we probably wanna be getting together again until after New Year, uh, we'd like to indulge you, suppose, and give you all a very personal, uh, Christmas greeting. Well, as happy as possible to each and every one.
Very good, Earl, and we do have, uh, a, uh, celebration of thought year-end and, and holiday seasonal celebration. The authority has, uh, have you on Friday, tomorrow, uh, at, uh,
Harbor Club.
Where?
The Harbor Club.
At the Harbor Club. Uh, is that a what's that? Yeah. And, uh, the commissioners are invited to and encouraged to attend. What's the hours, Nathan?
Six to nine.
Six to nine. Six to nine in the morning? Six to nine, I'm usually asleep now. All right, well, if there be no other business, uh, I will gavel it down. And, uh, meeting adjourned, and, uh, thank you all for, uh, indulging me and, uh,